Hey, good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven oh two P M. The Planning Board is convening this meeting in person and by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting and take attendance as members and staff. Rob Almeida.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Abby Flanagan.
Yeah.
Sue Felshen.
Here.
Mark Giddings.
Here.
And I, Linda Miller, am here as well. And we also have Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes with us. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any affiliation, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments anytime instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. We'll now go to the first item on the agenda. And that would be under Administrative Business Public Comment. This period of general public comment is limited to up to fifteen minutes, with no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker. General public comment is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone in the room wish to make a comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anyone on Zoom wish to make a comment? Okay, thank you. We'll move right along. And the next item number two is two ninety-two, two ninety-four Baker Avenue, the Novo Riverside Commons Comprehensive Permit. And this centers on the Planning Board comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals and a discussion that they will have on November thirtieth. So there should be a draft letter to the zoning board from the Planning Board and the Town Planner. And now we'll open up to any of the Planning Board members who might have a comment wish to amend, wish to discuss, or add something to the draft letter.
Do you want me to show you my screen?
Yeah, that will, that would be great.
Well, sadly, I have several things.
That's excellent. No, that's not sad.
Um, several of them are annoying little wordsmithing comma-type things. But skipping to the substantive things.
Yes.
Let's see. Okay, on the second page under traffic impact, I think we should rephrase the last sentence. I found it very hard to follow what was intersecting with what? Baker Avenue extension doesn't intersect with the number three hundred Baker Avenue driveway. It didn't, that's Baker Avenue, not Baker Avenue extension. Is that what we meant? Or did we mean number three hundred Baker Avenue driveway and Main Street? No, no, that can't be right. They don't intersect at all. And I didn't understand what we meant by both Cottage Street and Elm Street. They're intersections with what? With respectively Baker Ave and Baker Ave Extension? And I have a suggestive phrasing which would be this includes the intersection of Baker Avenue and the number three hundred Baker Avenue driveway, the intersection Main Street, Old Bridge Road and Crest Street, the intersection of Baker Avenue and Cottage Street, the intersection of Baker Avenue Extension and Elm Street, and the seven hundred and sixty-eight Elm Street project application. If that is, that's what we actually meant to say in the letter. Possibly we meant Route Two at some point, but I wasn't sure of that.
Isn't it, we're asking for just a concrete, more comprehensive study of the traffic involved in the whole area? Don't we want to leave it open? I mean.
Well, I, I think the, um, this was taken mostly from what the consultant had said, was essentially some of those, some intersections and roadways were looked at and some were overlooked.
Yeah, I think probably didn't look at Cottage. I mean, because that's way away from the project. Okay.
Right, and they didn't look at Elm Street either.
So we need to have a look at the whole encompassing area.
So including, but not limited to.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay. Highlight some specific ones of concern, but not limited to, to add comprehensively.
Sure, and make it a little clearer which particular sections we need.
Okay, so are you getting all this or this thing?
I emailed you my comments earlier, Elizabeth, but I spent my whole afternoon snowing you under with emails you haven't seen yet, so you haven't gotten it yet.
Okay, so I, we can move forward from that.
We're all agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, on next, two sections down under loading and earth fill-in removal, I think we could use a slight rephrasing. We say local roads and parking lots cannot support this process. Well, if we assert that they cannot support it, then there's nothing else to say. It can't be fixed. So I think we need to rephrase this either to say, well, we can't support this application because you can't possibly do your fill-in removal, or to down weaken that language rather than saying it cannot support this process, but cannot supports this process without further clarification.
About global stress. I don't know.
They could need their plan.
And the next sentence says, a process for this movement that will protect mature plantings and sensitive areas in, or I think that should be ordering, on wetlands needs to be understood. Maybe we could just delete the whole sentence. Local roads and parking lots cannot support this process, or cannot support this process.
There's an important point. Okay, we can't have, you know, a hundred heavy trucks moving backwards over through.
It's daily hourly. Local roads and parking lots cannot support this process without a mitigation plan in place.
Ah, great, yes.
Right. And we go through that adjacent field whenever we tear up the, the runways.
Yeah. It just, it was a phrasing. Yeah, that was, no, and we said it's great. And then the next.
So wait, so I'm going to say. Traffic management and potential mitigation plan in place prior to the start of.
Right. Great. And the, the next paragraph says longer-term normal loading, which I think many people will have trouble understanding. I think we meant in the longer term, but we didn't really mean in the longer term. We meant when the building is occupied, loading deliveries, trash removal, and circulation need to be detailed and documented, except that's how about an adequate process for loading deliveries, trash removal, and circulation with emergency vehicles when the building is occupied, needs to be detailed and documented.
An adequate what?
An adequate process for existing text. Right up to vehicles, comma, for when the building is occupied, comma, needs with an S D A. I don't think we need normal anymore because now it's clear that by we don't mean the loading of the earth removal trucks. Yeah.
It's just that none of that has been discussed or revealed.
Sure, just please delete the, the for loading. All, you'll see, I'll send you. Let's see, under architecture, now, this is, this is actually a new point I'd like to raise since I was unfortunately not present at the last meeting. As usual, I would like to jump on my bandwagon of all exterior lighting should be twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven hundred Kelvin or lower in color temperature to protect the diurnal cycles of humans, other animals, and plants. But only if members of the planning board are comfortable inserting that into the letter.
I certainly am not a much.
I think it should be three thousand or less. I think you get into, you go about three thousand, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, H D C was, was.
Fifty-seven.
So, yeah, it might, it might be worth, so I understand the point.
Right.
I appreciate the point. I accept the point. I'd want to be consistent with what other town boards are using for their Kelvins. Because, for example, H D C is very specific about Kelvins. And it's for those reasons and a variety of other reasons. And I think if we choose twenty-seven hundred, we need a reason for it.
I think the N R C is at three thousand.
Is at three thousand, and I think that's.
The N R C is at three thousand.
I think most town boards are three thousand. So if we wanted to go to twenty-seven hundred, we'd need to offer up some.
But I can check with.
Which is a big deal too, but.
True point. I will go on some stuff about why it should be twenty-seven hundred versus three thousand. Uh, but if everybody else is currently saying three thousand, then we could take that point up separately.
Yeah.
But we could say, for example.
And do we want to make them dark sky compliant?
Oh, they are required to. Yeah, they've already said that they would be dark sky compliant, but they haven't given us any unders, I mean, we don't know where the ballards are. We don't know where the. Yeah, they're supposed to be providing a lighting plan, but I think to add Sue's comment to this is fine.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
They furthermore said that they would not allow us village off the site because dark skies doesn't prevent that. So yay, but they should mention the Kelvin. Okay. Right, let's see, anything else? Uh, then we have this whole list of items where we say confirm this, confirm that, confirm the other. So they did confirm it in the previous meeting, but they didn't confirm it in writing. So should we say?
Confirm it to the same zoning board for appeals. They confirmed it it when they spoke with us, and so I thought that was important to pass on that that had been stated.
It never hurts to be careful.
Yeah, well, on grounds of which I wonder if we should say confirm in writing. Or do you think it's enough to say?
I think the zoning board can choose to do.
Whatever they choose to do.
They think is appropriate, but the, the the applicant made those statements to us, but I don't consider that binding in any way.
But, right.
If they made a statement.
No, I absolutely approve that of us having all these confirmed items. I was just questioning whether we needed to say in writing. I see your point. The Z B A can handle that. Under items three and four, under the pond, they told us that they didn't want fencing around the pond. And they told us that they didn't want the pond to be accessible to the public. But we phrased our items as confirm that there will not be fencing and confirm that the pond will not be accessible. I don't think that the planning board should take a stand on whether we want there to be fencing or not, and whether we want the pond to be inaccessible or not. Could we, would it be all right to say confirm whether or not there will be fencing and confirm whether or not the pond will be accessible just in case they up and change their minds and decide the pond will be accessible to the public, but wouldn't want somebody to say, but the planning board doesn't want it to be accessible.
We don't, we don't want it to be accessible.
We don't?
I think that's what they stated.
No, they don't. But what about us? Do we have a position one way or the other? I thought we did not have a position one way or the other.
Well, we should. I mean, if we have, if we want to take a position and say we don't.
Can you be no kind of a nuisance? I mean, you know, I can see a problem with having the public around the pond.
No, if it's fully on their property, then it's a massive liability for them to have public access to it.
Right.
Oh, I have a problem with them forbidding public access. I just thought it was overstepping for us to say.
As long as they don't charge for it, it's not a massive liability. But if you freely open your land to recreation, as long as you are not charging for it, Massachusetts law doesn't leave you liable for it in general.
I was only suggesting maybe we could be. I was only suggesting maybe we could be neutral in our language rather than positively stating that we don't want fencing and don't want public accessibility.
But Andrew, wouldn't that become an attractive nuisance, like a trampoline? But it's a pond. It's not a trampoline. It's a naturally occurring body of water.
But I think if you've built a, you've built a recreation path around it, and you have a bunch of little kids who are riding their, their bikes, and then they ride off the bike path straight into the pond, and somebody drowns, not to be morbid about it, but I would sue this developer so fast. And I think I'd probably, so to say, but I think, I think the point of this is that what we're asking for in the confirmation is, is it's not a not a, which one way or the other, just confirm what your plan is. Your plan, you have told us your plan is X. Please confirm your plan is X.
Okay, I clearly I'm not getting my point across, so I will just move on to the next thing. Under outdoor and indoor amenities, the phrasing seemed a little bit confused here. Should it not be on number one, confirm the play areas, seating areas, and kayak storage are included in the design?
Yes.
Okay. And minor thing. Are included, are included in the design.
Did we ask you about lighting on the basketball court? This, this.
Basketball court is actually there. It's part of the complex next door.
Oh, okay.
What they're saying is that the residents are going to have access.
To, okay, sorry, I thought, I looked at that for a second.
That they confirm that.
Sorry, I thought for a second they were building a new basketball.
No, 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 it's part of that whole rehabilitation.
Okay, yeah.
Next door.
Yeah, which seems so separate from it now, but I guess.
It is, it's completely separate. What they're saying is this is where they're going to have this access to that facility. That's part of the deal that they are supporting.
Okay.
And on item three, I think it should be confirmed that there will be a gym meeting spaces and bicycle storage interior to the buildings. And do we want to say anything about confirming that there will be bicycle parking outside, or?
There is.
We can make that.
There's bicycle park can already shown on the plans.
Okay, great. Then, under geothermal, item one, we just need to throw in the word system at the end of the sentence. On item two, will reduce heating and cooling energy consumption. Item three, again, put system at the end of the sentence. Are we okay with how squishy the word large is? I think that's what they said if I heard, if I remember correctly. I mean, nobody knows what large is. Ten percent could be large, but as long as we're okay with being squishy, it's fine. Item four, confirm that each residential unit will benefit by having their own ground source heat pump. They didn't explain exactly how the geothermal system would work, but I would have to guess that they're going to have one set of wells. And there will not be a separate ground source heat pump for each individual unit. So did we mean, you know, it's just a wording here.
It said each unit would control their heat and cool.
Ah, so may, maybe they mean each unit will have a separate, have separate thermostat control.
That's correct.
So then we should.
Have separate.
I'm, so I'm, I'm gonna flag that for later?
No. So at the meeting Thursday night, the person in charge of sustainability is going to be expanding on some of this, so. So maybe you can have this be more of a question to confirm how each residential unit.
Will benefit by having individual control over geothermal heat in their unit? That, that would be nicely less specific.
That's good. I think, I think part of it was also that they would, they would have a lot of savings from the geothermal.
Right.
Yes.
And will that be in some way passed on to the residents as?
And they said it would be at least in part, but confirming that would be nice.
Exactly how that's going to work, I think is a useful question.
I have read.
So can we just confirm how each residential unit will benefit from the geothermal?
Will use and benefit from the system.
Yeah.
Will benefit from, yeah, great.
And although they're fairly certain this is going to happen until they'll do the test.
They don't, they don't know, sure.
Yeah, now, they also didn't say, I don't know. You asked, I think it was you, like, is there any risk from the geothermal system? And of course, as with any system, there's a risk it will break. And in the case of geothermal, if the wells fail, then they have to fix them. And I have no idea where they're planning on putting their wells. If they're under a parking lot, then they have to rip a parking lot. If they're under a play space, they have to put the play space. And I don't know. I actually am comfortable with letting them figure out how to run their own, design their own geothermal system. I just thought, okay. Is that it? Now, of course, there's something else. Fossil fuel free at the very end. Confirm that the buildings will be one hundred percent electric with no onsite provision for use of fossil fuels. Would that be acceptable? And the reason for that is many single-family homes are, are all electric, but then you find out they've actually thrown it up on propane-powered fireplace, so they're not fossil fuel-free. And they're, this is a large building, so it will be different, with no onsite, on-site provision for use of fossil fuels.
Did you send me this?
I did send you this.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, just, okay, as long as everybody's okay. Okay, and there were a couple of other things that, like I said, were just comments, but they will find them in here.
Yeah, this is just going to the.
Comments on that level.
Z B A. I mean, this is not, you know, this is just to.
Yeah.
So when you wake up at three o'clock in the morning, do you think of this project?
I do. Sadly, there's, there's a reason for the note without the pen next to my desk.
That's just good.
So we didn't ask, Andrew, do you have any additional thoughts, Andrew? We didn't on this letter? Okay, so then.
No, no, no.
Any, any comments from anyone in the room? And then on Zoom, it looks like.
Do you, Mary?
Yeah, dude.
Oh, oh, thank you. Okay.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to put this in the letter, but I remember when the Select Board sent their letter to Mass Housing, they recommended that the developer enter into a host communities agreement with the town to basically address things that won't be addressed by the Z B A. So I'm a little bit, so I I'm a little bit confused about the process. So how much will be documented by the Z B A? And how much might spill over to this host agreement? So we have it up to opportunities to document what we're agreeing to with this developer. So can you clear that up for?
Um, I don't. So they are, they are not parallel processes.
Okay, yep.
So right.
Sequential, as far as I understand it.
They're definitely sequential because until the Board of Appeals gets to a, a certain point where they are no longer taking in and gathering information and comments, and they are now starting to deliberate on a project and what and how those negotiations go forward of, you know, what is going to be included and what is not within the scope, or if the developer starts to push back on something. You know, if the Board of Appeals during their conversation says, we'd like you to build a new fire station. And, you know, the Felbert, you know, obviously that makes the project uneconomic. We're not going to go there. And it doesn't get incorporated into that conver, it, but it's taken off the table, and it's not part of the decision or any condition of approval. Then sequentially, if you know, the Select Board during their comment, you know, their conversations, we really, you know, we know you can't build us a new fire station, but you know, how about if you kind of help out with the new fire station? That can be part of that conversation, but you won't, you won't know until the Board of Appeals gets passed. You know, I'm, I'm going to say probably after the meeting in January.
Right.
Um, is, is when we'll know more.
Okay, that's my first question. Second question is, the sewer hookup fee. Do we know anything about what they're thinking? What is the right forum to discuss with them how much they're expecting from the town? And how would that?
So, there's, so as for this process, there's, there is no expectation. They, they cannot expect the town to do anything during this process with the Board of Appeals. They can, they are expected to pay the sewer improvement fee, like any other development. They have requested a waiver to a portion of that sewer improvement fee. And the Board of Appeals will have to have that conversation with them about that waiver. The Board of Appeals can say no, the, you know, Water and Sewer Division is an enterprise fund. Everybody pays the fee, and, you know, we're not going to grant you that waiver. The developer can come back and say, well, that's really going to make our project uneconomic. And they would then have to provide the documentation to the Board of Appeals showing that. So a waiver isn't, isn't, you know, automatic. Just because they ask for it doesn't mean the Board of Appeals has to grant it. So they will address each waiver in their decision.
I think there is a precedent in other communities where the waivers for affordable units do have to be granted, and we're actually checking with legal counsel. This is just for your nation as far as is that, is that true or not? And then how we grant that internally, you know, not between us and the developer, but within Concord, we'll have to figure out how do we allocate the money to the enterprise fund, not their problem. Not their problem.
And not the problem of the Board of Appeals either. So, you know, they, you know, they'll go through waiver to allow residential in the, you know, industrial district. Obviously, yes, project can't even be built without that waiver. They'll have to individually go through each waiver. Yeah, and deliberate on each waiver.
Thank you. I have one other really small thing. In the letter, under the access trail, it says something about, will there be a, confirm there'll be a dog park along the trail? What does that mean exactly? Because do you mean a dog park as an amenity? Or do you mean dogs are going to be allowed on the trail? Or what is it? Or, or, I don't, I'm wondering if it's misplaced being under the access trail and should be under the outdoor amenities. So are we talking about a dog park? Is that what we're talking about, a dog park?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think it should be in a different spot.
Yeah, because a dog park along the trail, I don't think that's what you want.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Good catch.
Although my yellow lab would love your, your labs, but love it.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we good to go to Zoom?
Yep.
Keith?
Thanks very much, Keith Mulvaney, fifty-six Y to have Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And also, along with Mary, one of, an advisor to Megan Zamudo, who's advising the Select Board on a proposed host community agreement for the Novo forty B. And some of the issues that Mary has mentioned are things that we're looking at. The, and I, I guess the questions that, that I'd have in particular is we're very supportive, the trust is very supportive of the extension of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that will include a bridge over the Assabat. And it's our understanding that it, from, from, from the explanations we, we've heard is that that extension needs to formally reach all the way to Baker Ave, which is, which is going to be accomplished by the developer volunteering, I guess, to, to connect it. And that's great, but, but we wanted to ask, what, what officially does that look like? Is that an easement? How, what would be the standard be to convince the funding agency for the eight million dollar extension and bridge that in, that in fact, it's not just a, you know, because the developer said so, or a handshake or whatever, but is there some formal action that the developer would take in offering an easement and the town would take in accepting it? And that's probably a town meeting vote. What's, I, I think we, we just wanted to try to identify what the steps are. Love the idea that we can accomplish an extension to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail all the way out to Baker Ave. That we can accomplish uh an extension to the Bruce Freeman rail trail all the way out to Baker Ave. Uh. Uh, uh, but we, you know, wanna wanna make sure that whatever the steps. Are to to uh convince uh. Uh, the uh funding agency, which is the uh. The uh Boston Region MPO uh tip uh Transportation Improvement Plan. Uh, so that's great. Uh. Um, not unrelated to that is. Uh, and I confer with your your proposed comment that the developer should agree to to plow. Uh, the portion of that extension that's on on their property. Uh, the what what that points out to me is the is the uh. The need uh for the town to have a similar policy about plowing. Uh, the uh, wouldn't it be a shame if there were an eight million dollar bridge extension that that is not usable? Once it's, once there's snow and ice. Uh, because the town isn't, uh the right now, it's it's a no plow policy on on any. Part of the Bruce Freeman rail trail and I don't, I'm. I'm imagining that also includes the bridge over Route Two that we're officially using now for the first winter. Uh, sure would be nice if that could get plowed. Uh, and but with respect to this project, I think it would be. Um. It would, it would render that eight million dollar. Uh, investment useless if the if the new neighbors who live. Uh, at uh Novo Riverside Commons can't walk over that bridge. For several months of of the year. Uh, once it, once there's snow. So if 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 you have an opinion about requiring the developer to. Uh, and and this hasn't, you know, it hasn't come up at at for discussion at at. At my committee yet, but but you're discussing it here. I'll be attending the the ZBA meeting on. Uh, on Thursday night uh as well. But if there uh if if if. The town's policy needs to be altered to ensure that the that. The this extension of the rail trail, uh including a bridge. Uh, uh, i- is what brings it all the way out to Baker Ave. I think the whole thing ought to be ought to be uh plowed. The public portion as well as the portion that the development has. So that's uh, that's the issue. Thanks a lot.
Um, so I can um reply to that. As far as whether the Bruce Freeman rail trail or. Um, this Assabat River Trail gets plowed is a completely separate conversation that needs to happen. In the budgeting process for Public Works, the Finance Committee, the Select Board. Um, and Town Meeting. So however that conversation happens, um that's the correct forum for it to happen. Um, as far as the um, the. Board of Appeals and the conversation that the Board of Appeals, um, the decision for this project. Um, will not include any language that. Remotely requires the applicant. Um, the developer to provide this public access. It will reference in the decision, the. Developer um has incorporated into their project. Uh, this trail that wraps around connects to the um Baker Ave. Uh, and uh has stated that uh this will be open to the public. Um, and public access will be provided. Uh, that will be stated in the decision. Um, it is shown on the plans and it becomes a reference document in the decision. Um, but nowhere in that decision while it state, the applicant has to provide the easement. That language will jeopardize, it doesn't jeopardize the funding per se. But what it does is it triggers something through whenever you have federal or state funding. Um, you have to provide fair market value for the taking of private land for public use. Um, so if there is any indication that the town is requiring this of the developer. That is the outcome. So that is why the application that was submitted by the developer says. And we will build this and we will provide public access. All the town is going to do and the decision by the Board of Appeals is going to say, thank you very much. They have incorporated this into the project. Ultimately, it's going to work out great because we're going to connect this project. To this bridge, which and ultimately to the Bruce Freeman rail trail. So that is how that sequencing will work.
That that, thank you. Appreciate the the answer. Is there any reason why that? Uh, why a voluntary agreement between the developer and the town couldn't uh accomplish the same thing?
Um, be.
But the 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 assurance that that whatever you call that, uh, the uh, the uh. Uh, that goes all the way out to Baker Ave, why couldn't the select board enter into an agreement, a voluntary agreement?
Because because. Well, so one, it's not needed. It it is shown on their plans and it will be a requirement. For like any other project, you know, they're required to build this project per the plans. Um, and it will be referenced in the decision as part of the decision that this is part of the project and and what the developer. Has agreed is part of the project and they have agreed to build it as part of their project. So. Um, it it it's not needed, but two, if if that is a conversation the select board wants to have. Offline, I would definitely get town council's input on whether that kind of conversation, even if it's in a voluntary. You know, your discussion, whether that.
Yeah, we're doing that. We're doing that, but you're the planning board and and have opinions about things like whether. Whether a portion of this uh trail that's open to the public, uh you're you're saying the the part that the developer controls. Plow, make sure it's plowed. I would think you might have an opinion about whether the rest of it should be applied or not and.
But that's not part of, that's not part of this conversation, Keith. Whether the town.
It's the same project.
Whether the town choose.
Then I'll, then I'll, then I'll say it under public statements the last, the next time. But it's an, nevertheless, it's a planning issue. It's an issue of access. And and while you're thinking about it, you don't have to incorporate it in your letter, but I'm just saying while you're talking about. Requiring the developer to plow his portion, why wouldn't you want to recommend to the select board that the town plow theirs?
Because we're planning board and it's not our business.
It's not our purview, Keith.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a holy, it's a complete, we appreciate what you're saying and we think it'd be great. Well, it's not.
It it can, it.
Right.
Completely logical like connection of like, yeah, it makes sense, but it's just outside of the scope. Of of the recommendations that we make to this EBA and that's what we're focused on.
Right, right, but it would not be outside of the scope of a recommendation that you make to your appointing authority, this the select board. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the trust make uh talk about it and make it to our appointing authority. Uh, for for whatever it's worth, Mary and I are advising the select board for this with respect to this. Uh, this particular project for the purposes of not as EBA. Uh, decision, but a separate agreement between the town and the developer. So that that's it. And it and it's it's helpful to know what the process is. So thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments and um. When when we get to a point where the select board seeks our input. Uh, we will be happy to provide it just as the.
We we usually don't wait for them to ask.
I see we have another hand and I I apologize, um.
Paris Bollinger.
It Paris Bollinger.
Hi, hi, yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Paris Ballinger. Um. I'm with Energy North Group, uh, who owns the property one twenty-nine through one forty-seven Lowell Road. Which is the Concord Oil Site. Um, so anyway, just an introduction, um, I haven't, this is my first meeting. I've I've seen the invites. Um, and the notices, but have been un- unable to make that. I just wanted to make a a quick introduction. On who I represent.
Mister um Bollinger, um. We have, we have, uh, will be taking comment and discussing the MBTA Communities Act a little later in the program. This is really. Related to the forty B application over at.
Right.
Avenue, so.
All right.
Don't mind standing by, um, we can hear your comment or input and if you can't stand by, you can.
I will, yeah. I didn't have a, I didn't have a copy of the agenda, so I apologize.
Not, not a problem. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, um, we'll try and make some progress so that we do get to the MBTA before. Uh, but it's too long. So um, the question is for everybody. Are we comfortable with um the letter as amended? And willing to. There, um. See that we we're comfortable with that or we should probably take a vote on that. Um. Yes, Elizabeth. Oh, did we lose everyone?
Andrew, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you still see me?
Oh, but we can't hardly hear you. The speaker changed. Give us a sec.
Uh, technology break.
Look, yeah, juice.
This one, right?
The other option that was there before is gone, maybe.
Andrew, would you speak?
Sally sells seashells by the seashell.
Can you? Oh, it looks very unhappy. Looks good.
I will say you all are perfectly audible.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we'll just have to ask people on Zoom to speak up. Okay, so uh the question is, uh, shall we take? Uh, a formal vote or? Do people want to see a revised letter and then?
But that would push it off.
I'm I'm fine with, I'm fine with incorporating the changes that's discussed.
Okay.
We're still gonna have.
So I think that's a good census and uh we'll move on. Okay, uh. Uh, the next item is zoning bylaw, parking analysis and warrant article discussion. And so here. Um, Mark and Elizabeth spent time with the um consultant. Uh, discussing uh. What? What? Um. We could present, uh, what they could present to us as a way forward in terms of the uh parking program.
Uh, the consultant did a great job. I mean, we all agree that lots of great data. Um, I'm not so sure that it warrants us putting forth. An article before the town meeting. I said that the last time. There's a couple of problems, but some some of the data that he presented, like on restaurants. Would cause us to have to constrict the level of parking, okay? Some of the other stuff is almost in line with it. It's a little out of line, but as I said the last meeting, I think if we take that. Data that he's given us and use that as a guideline. For the foreseeable future, we're better off than presenting something at the town meeting. I think town meeting is going to be. Very hectic with the whole MBTA project and I think that should be our goal. Okay. My opinion, sorry.
Okay, so not even small changes in table four. It, we'd have to come back again next year anyhow.
That's correct. Okay, and I I have a firm belief that we're going to be looking hard at parking overall. As I think I said the last meeting, you know, some cities in the the country have gone to no parking regulation whatsoever. Okay, based upon the fact that it is, you know, I go over to Concord Market, isn't it? You know, Jim built this huge big platform next to that based upon the parking requirements. I never see a car in that parking room, okay? And here we have all this space that's been used, the cost associated with it. They said a parking spot in apartment building costs as much as sixty thousand dollars. The concept is if we can reduce the amount of parking we require without having congestion and problems with parking, okay? Then that should be our goal. Okay. Does that make sense?
Um, so I guess that, okay, that's twenty twenty-four town meeting. Do you think that we should just? Kind of change our thinking and have some education for the planning board? Or should we be aiming at a parking? Uh, amendment of some kind in twenty twenty-five just.
Yeah, I I think we need to study the whole parking situation. I think we need to involve other constituents in it, if you will. We should talk to the people that are trying to grow the businesses here in Concord, okay, to see what they think we should do with some of these cases. You know, some of the things we've come up against, you know, the one that you and I are familiar with was Concord Academy. They built this huge big art center, okay? Do we have the right parking there? You know, I don't think any of us will particularly comfortable with the resolution there. We should have better data around that sort of thing, okay? We continue to run into it in restaurants. What's the right number for restaurants? I'm not so sure, you know, we're gonna. Be confronted with that when we look at the project of where paparazzi is, okay? I'm sure we're gonna have a discussion about parking spaces there.
Parking at the library was.
Okay, yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, so I think it needs more analysis. I think the study that we hired for the consultant is a terrific one. It gives us great guidelines. If you take. You know, the chart and look at what his recommendations are versus ours. You know, he says that we should have three hundred square feet as opposed to our current one is two hundred fifty. That's not what we need to tell me in my opinion, okay? Um, and if you looked at the restaurant recommendations that he gave, you know, nobody in town could put a restaurant, okay, so. Think we need to look at some.
Okay.
My opinion.
Um, what do you think, Elizabeth?
Um, I'm. I'm in a hundred percent agreement, um. Partially because I I do think there there was so much information in those technical memorandums. Um, I am, and I think part of that is um definitely hired a traffic engineer. Um, I think all of that can be distilled into, um. Uh, I am working with um Heather and we are going to take that and and kind of like the MBTA Communities page. Um, start a, you know, you know, parking. Um, and I and and we have to kind of be careful because there's there's a difference between parking, you know. Zoning bylaw parking requirements and the whole conversation about parking in the community. Um, that's, that's a much bigger conversation that deals with um public parking spaces. Private parking spaces, um, you you know, if if all the public spaces and all the private spaces. Were all just open to anybody and everybody, there'd never be a parking problem ever. Um, but you know, the fact that, you know, an example, quote Car Cafe has those. Why isn't somebody able to use those when the cafe is closed? So I, you know, that's a much bigger conversation. But I think for the planning board to put forth a warrant article for parking, because. Um, parking is um a very visceral reaction for people. That you have to have that in a format that people can understand. Um, and you have to have that education happen and that's not going to happen between now.
Yeah, we don't have time to educate everybody to understand what we're actually talking about. All it's going to do. Is engender conversation at town meeting of, well, I can never park in the parking lot, you know, next to Ho or I can't, you know, it's. It's just not going to lead to a productive place because I think, as you're right, like. It's a broader conversation. I I mean, I looked at all of that information. I consider myself a reasonably intelligent person and I got like a couple pages in and I was like, oh. My God, I had no idea what's going on with this. I could not make a recommendation off of that without a lot more. Kind of comprehensive understanding of what we're talking about, looking at a town line. And if we can't do that, how are we going to expect people to do it in five minutes at town meeting and make a reasoned decision? I just don't think we're there. And I think we have such a different focus for this coming town meeting. We have such an important. Um, piece of the agenda that's really important to our work. That I I think we'd give short shrift to the parking bylaws that we tried to push it forward for this town meeting.
Um, what I would like to um throw out to the board and and Mary's here, but um. So in the next, um, I'm going to say week. Um, you know, I need to finalize the um planning division budget. Um, and um every year, you know. We try and put in a little bit of money to to fund a project um for the planning board. Um, what you're, you know, what the board's gonna see, you know, in January is, um, you know, the request. Um, for proposals to update the subdivision rules and rights. Well, the funding for that was put in the planning division budget, you know, two years ago or so. What I think might be helpful and I think um I can ask um Sam, you know, from T E C. Uh, give me a ballpark idea of. Taking, um, you know, maybe in for the last, you know, since I've been back, you know, the last eight years. Um. All the various applications where um people requested relief from parking and they all had. You know, these parking analysis that goes. and they all had, you know, these parking analysis that goes with that, um, somehow, um, taking a, you know, a comprehensive understanding of all of those requests for relief as they, um, relate to the public parking and the the technical data that Sam provided, um, in the parking requirements and, um, see what the, the correlation between that information is. I don't know if that makes sense to everybody, but. So I don't.
I think, well, I think my, I have a concern which is from the perspective of a builder or developer. And that is, there was a certain set of rules that we give them, and so now we either said, you know, they're gonna go and look at those rules and try and comply with them. And yet we're saying to ourselves, well, those really aren't the rules. They don't make sense.
Well, we said that already a little while ago, which is why we embarked on this, this, um, uh, attempt to change the rules, but if it's too quick, it's too quick.
Well, I'm not saying it. I'm not saying it.
That far out of line. I mean, what's the difference between two hundred and fifty square feet versus three hundred square feet?
I guess to some developers, when they're living in sixteen or thirty or a hundred and fifteen spots. But, but, um, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, I wanna make sure that this isn't, um, it's something that, you, you know, um, when we looked at it as a big plan, we couldn't find a ways to chop it up, which is the first thing you try and do when something is too big, right? You say, oh, let's look and see if we can find a slice, and we couldn't really find a slice. So I'm, I'm good with that, too. I'm good with, we can't do it now, and I'm good that we can't find a little piece to get us momentum. But I'm concerned that we might lose any momentum we have. And that it really is a pressing issue, because almost everything we see does require parking relief. And, and we are not giving people accurate information in terms of, we know our number's wrong, but we don't know what the right number is. So it's really, we're putting on bonus on a developer to kind of look in the crystal ball and try and figure out where we're going and what would satisfy.
Well, I think that's part of the nature of it, is that, that, you know, zoning bylaws, I mean, they're always changing, and that's part of being a developer, is you understand that you present a project. And, you know, in two years, the rules might look different. In three years, the rules might look different, and that's part of the risk that you kind of calculate. And I think, I, I think it's an important issue, and I think it's important to be thoughtful and considerate about how we approach it. And I would rather err on the side of doing this slowly and making the right decisions about the changes that need to be made. And I think, I, I think Elizabeth is right that, you know, we need to kind of take a look at, yeah, where is this stressing development in this town? Where is it prohibiting the type of demo we want? Where, you know, what's it really doing on the ground? And that's what looking at the applications is, is gonna do is, yeah, what kind of relief are people seeking? What relief are we granting? Um, does that lead us in a direction that says, oh, yeah, there are some, actually some easy changes we can make when we have a more comprehensive look at the data. We just don't have enough information yet to do that. And, and that's part of, you know, developers always know that, you know, boards change, select board changes, new rules come into play. That's just kind of the nature of the game of that, that things could change two years, three years, five years, ten years down the road. You have to kind of deal with what you have on the books in the moment.
I think there is one change that we could credibly take up this year because it would align with MBTA communities, and that would be if we chose to change the residential requirement to one space for, um, one bedroom, two spaces for two bedroom, no, one and a half or two, and two spaces for any larger number of bedrooms for a dwelling unit. I also don't think it's critical to do that this year, because it's going to take longer for our MBK communities, um, to get reviewed by the state and implemented, and if we left it until next TM, um, twenty twenty-five, I think that would be okay. But it would fold in with this year's push on MBTA communities if we thought that that was one change. So that's, um, so when you talk about the MBTA community zoning, um, that is the other piece of things that, um, I, I, well, I'm not sure that you, for MBTA, because again, parking is, is such contentious. It's, it is very contentious. So I'm not even sure in the MBTA communities if you want to change the parking requirement. Um, and, and just leave it at two spaces, because there, there really hasn't been a significant conversation about changing the parking requirement. And if, if that is a broader conversation that the community wants to change, it's community-wide, um, that is definitely not something that you would move forward this year. I mean, that, so, I, I think when you think about the MBTA communities, um, similar with many of the zoning bylaw amendments that the board does, uh, right now, um, it's to get something passed at town meeting and be in compliance. Um, and then from there, figure out what is working and what is not working. Because somebody can still, even under MBTA communities, if that passes, um, and it has, you know, two spaces per dwelling unit, that doesn't prohibit somebody from applying for a special permit and request relief from parking and, you know, and request a change in the unit depending on where it is, and, you know, maybe, you know, maybe it's an assistant, you know, or maybe it's a a, a residential project where, you know, they're going to have, you know, a, a round-the-clock shuttle, you know, for people to use, and, and so they can make a justification. That's still an option. Um, so, that's a fair point. And, and I, I think as far as the parking, um, I don't, I don't think it needs to be everything all at once either. Um, that, you know, there's a lot of great information about the, you know, relief from parking and, you know, incorporating, you know, transportation demand management measures. Um, and that, it's like, okay, if you want relief for parking, you know, you know, these are some of the measures that you're gonna have to do, and, and so there is that for a developer, they know upfront, you know, okay, this is, and I'm prepared, you know, and I know upfront, and I'm gonna you know, have that be part of my project and, you know, the budget for the project, and so I do think there are things that can happen. Like, not this year.
Two to three-year program or two to four-year program, do you think you could, like, scope out for what the stages would be in the steps so that?
Yeah, well, I think we could bring something to town meeting in twenty twenty-five, okay? I mean, I think we'll have a clearer picture about the whole parking situation. You certainly know more about the MBTA project, so I think that would give us a guidance on, you know, whether this is going to be things close to transportation that would reduce parking requirements. There's just a lot of moving parts to it, okay? Um, and I think it takes some study. So I, I'm not uncomfortable with saying in twenty twenty-five, we make that part of the warrant article. You know, that we improve the shared parking concept, you know, this whole thing about wood till cable and that's nuts, okay, you know? I mean, there's some other things like that that we can do, okay?
Okay. So you think you and Elizabeth and maybe Andrew could get into that and think strategically about twenty twenty-five? You know, but, but I think that's what it would take. I mean, and I, I, it's, you know.
Well, and I think.
I, I don't think, you know, I think if you sort of think about it and come up sort of early next year, you know, and, I don't.
Well, I think, you know, we, we see how the MBTA project moves through in the couple months, well, the clear indication about, you know, where we're heading with the project.
That sounds good. That sounds very good. Everyone on board?
Yep, yep.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You, I know you did a lot of work.
Well, not as much as you've done, so.
No, well.
And I hope you don't dock me out on this, but I think. I'm not at all comfortable going then and saying, well, we should change this regulation to two hundred and fifty to three hundred. I think we'll have this huge discussion about parking. People will be standing up and saying, I can't park with the library, you know.
Exactly.
We don't need that mess, okay?
No.
Okay.
We will be deliberative and planned. Yes, okay. So now twenty twenty for town meeting articles. And, um, so, um, I am thinking that tonight, and I guess on the twelfth, we'll be talking about all the potential articles, um, that we're gonna present to town meeting. Um, maybe on the nineteenth or the January second, if we have to, but hopefully not. And, um, we'll decide which article and in exactly what form, um, we will be able to endorse for the meeting. Um, I just wanna make it, um, clear that if anyone has issues with any of these articles, we really wanna know and get those on the table at this meeting or next meeting. Um, and I think that if there's anything where anyone feels, um, that we are not ready to move something forward, or there are issues that would not support it, you, you know, just, just let's get it out there and make sure we address it as a, as a planning board together. And I'm glad everyone is here tonight so that we can, you know, make sure.
With the exception of the MBTA project, the others are just sort of housekeeping, you know what I think? We, I, no.
Well, the MBTA is.
Well, the MBTA is huge, okay.
Is, you know, right now, yeah, the tail wagging.
But the floodplain one is.
I, yeah.
That's just sort of abiding by.
Right.
The regulations.
So, but let's get to it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just, I just wanna make sure that we are all on the same page, um, because I think that's gonna be important, no matter what we're thinking about, but particularly MBTA. Husband says she does not like surprises. Okay, so, so we're starting with site plan? And I, I, you and Abby are working on that, and she can walk us through, um, and. Yep, bring it up, and I think there's, anyone who has any wordsmithing?
Of course I do. I'm wordsmithing on everything. Good. Um, so I, um, I, I think the, the first thing I want to at least bring up um, is, um, town council's, um, opinion advisory, we'll say, um, regarding the site plan. And, um, Linda, Sue and I, uh, did meet with town council and the, um, town moderator yesterday, and, um, he did provide, you know, further you know, clarification regarding the zoning bylaw, um, the site plan review amendment, and um, I don't know how much, you know, so, I apologize if some people know this, but, so, site, site plan review is, um, is not something that is condoned in the State Zoning Act. Um, there's no mention of site plan review in chapter forty-eight. Site plan review is, um, something, a process that communities, I don't even know who, who was the first town to do it, um, we love them, um, is a process for, uh, that started with under chapter forty-eight, there are protected uses where, um, childcare facilities and education, where you cannot require a special permit for those uses. So, um, you know, communities started site plan review, um, at least allowing um, input on, um, you know, massing, scale, open space, you know, s- those, those provisions in the zoning act um, that specifically say the planning board or a town, you know, can, um, enact bylaws to govern those types of things. Um, so, the Attorney General, um, has approved many amendments to site plan review that has happened in Concord over the years. Uh, and every time one happens, you will read in there an advisory that says, okay, you know, we've, you know, we have agreed that, but, you know, the community still needs to be very careful that, you know, there are protected uses, and you, you can't, you can't use site plan review, um, you know, as if it were a special permit process to, you know, continually delay or or overly burden or condition a project. Um, and town council's opinion is, for most communities, um, this is going to be tested um, heavily with MBTA community zoning, because, you know, same with Concord. Every community is looking to incorporate some type of level of site plan review into these projects. Um, so there may be a developer who's going to, um, test that process, see, they're using site plan review just like as if it was a special permit process, and, um, you know, this is undue burdensome and um, outside of the, you know, the scope of chapter forty-eight. So town council's, um, initial comment, um, the, the initial draft I sent to the board, um, included just the bold, um, italics. Currently, um, the zoning bylaw says the board has to act within ninety days of the application being filed. Um, three months, um, most of the time doesn't work. And so that was, that was just the reason that I initially had put this forth to the board. Um, and town council's concern is, um, the language and having it be ninety days following the date of the public hearing um, adds a, a greater level of ambiguity to the process, because, um,
What if we take half a year to open the public hearing? There's just been no surety.
So that's where, um, for a special permit, um, forty, chapter forty-eight says, uh, that the Board of Appeals has to open a public hearing within sixty-five days. Um, and then they have ninety, you know, ninety days from the close of the public hearing to render, you know, their decision. So there's less ambiguity in when the process is gonna start and, um, but in general, um, whenever town council provides an opinion of caution, um, makes me take a step back and say, okay, I don't want to put forth a bylaw amendment. I don't think it's on its face that anybody's gonna have any issues with this. Um, but I don't want to put forth a bylaw amendment that raises the level of uncertainty in litigation, potential litigation, um, when it's dealing with site plan review. There, there, to my knowledge, there has never been an issue under the current bylaw of a developer not granting a time extension. Um, it's, you know, nine times, you know, nine point nine times out of ten, i- it's in their best interest. Things are moving forward. It, it's just the whole process with an outside consultant takes longer. You know, their consultants don't get back fast enough, and, and so they do understand that, you know, you know, three months is, is generally not realistic, and, and as you said, most developers go in, and six months is usually the, the timeframe they give themselves for permitting process, so. Um, I, I kind of, I kind of leave it up to the board to decide whether they want to move forward with this. Um, I don't have, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. Um, but whenever town council provides me that type of caution, um, it, it makes me take a step back and and, okay, is, is this really an issue and a concern that needs to be immediately addressed? No, but.
Well, hold on. I understand town council's caution that when it just had the language following the date of the public hearing, it was an opening for the town to simply never open the public hearing or not for such a long time that it would be onerous and burdensome. But I got the impression that town council was fine with this after adding the language, open the public hearing within sixty-five days of proceed of an application.
It, it makes it less.
Did I misunderstand? Was town council still concerned even with the sixty-five days language?
Um, yes, because it's still, it's still, they have ninety days following of the, um, you know, following the date of the public hearing.
It is lengthening the time of ninety days to ninety plus sixty-five days potentially. It is lengthening the time of ninety days to ninety plus sixty five days potentially.
Yeah, yeah. So it I I mean, it's.
Is there a chance that the Attorney General's office would reject it? Because I'd hate to see us bring something and have the town vote on it and then have the Attorney General.
Wow, so so the, so the issue that I see is that. So there's, there's a couple of things, one, I think it's totally defensible and reasonable. I think you could just say to somebody, here's file four hundred and ninety two. The traffic guy took thirty six days to get back, then their traffic guy took eighteen days to get back, and then just walk them through a timeline. So I don't have concerns about being able to defend this and just say, hey, listen, this is just the reality of how this works, like, we're not. We're just trying to give people realistic expectations for how long this process actually takes. Not in any way delay that, just give them a realistic expectation, so I think it's totally defensible, it's easy. The problem is, you have a perception issue of bringing this at the same time you bring MBTA. And says, you're bringing that, and at the same time, you're trying to make this process longer? Hmm, are you just bringing MBTA because you wanna be in compliance, but you're gonna make the process really difficult for everybody? That's a perception issue. And if it's all coming up to the AG at the same time, they may look comprehensively at everything Concord's done in the last year. And say, these guys are giving lip service to MBTA, but they're gonna try to make the process really difficult. So that's, that's a perception concern. I actually. The hard thing is, I wish we brought this a year ago, because I think it, I think workflow wise, I think it's needed.
Yeah.
Um and I think it's actually a good thing for developers and for the town, but I think the timing of it feels inopportune. Given that we're gonna have MBT and review at the same time, so it may be something.
I didn't even, I didn't even.
Yeah, so it may be something that in another year or two, we say, hey, listen, our MBTA zoning has been so successful. That our town staffs will pull their hair out, because they've got to review so much, and these applications are getting more complicated. We need more time and we wanna be clear with developers, so it may make sense to change the timing and to do it. A year later, after our MBTA has been approved by the AG's office.
Good point.
That's my thoughts.
And in fact, is MBT not successful? A year from now, we could say, look, it wouldn't even make a difference, and we wanted to do this before anyhow. So either way, there's a good reason to bring it next year.
That's my.
We've answered your question.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
No, oh, it works.
It may, well, no, because it is, it's a wor- it's a, it is a workflow issue, and I also think. I also do think it's better for developers to have a clarity of understanding, but I. While I disagree with town council that I think it's problematic, I think the perception of it could be problematic, and that's what. We have to think about when, because there's a, it's a bigger fish to fry this year. Well, and even to to that point about the Attorney General. You know, should this pass town meeting, the Attorney General's office is going to have a flood.
Yep.
Of, and even town council's comment was, if you can take, make the format of our bylaw. Kind of similar to what the state's sample bylaws. Will probably make the review a little easier.
Yeah.
So if they're not really having to focus far.
Simplify, simplify.
Uh so that that person, I never even thought of the perception side of things and, yeah.
So I sent you an email with like moving a word or something, so save that for next year?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I already have a folder for twenty twenty five in the.
Now floodplain conservancy district, uh Rob and Elizabeth, you're up.
Yeah, I I mean, town council did not have, I mean, they had, you know, very minor edits, I.
Not much to read.
No, yeah.
Okay, but I have two things, okay? So I looked up on Concord Gis, uh the. Flood conservancy district, and I see that there are three or four discontinuous segments of it. And therefore. I shouldn't we say the exact boundaries plural of the district are defined? Because there are multiple discontinuous segments. So that would be boundaries are defined. And then. In the explanations. I don't know if you wanna share a screen or not.
Um, no.
That's fine, okay. In the explanation, um I think there was a flaw in the correction, in the change. To say. It 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 now says an additional requirement in the federal regulation. Was added in section seven point two point three point four, but an additional requirement. It seemed redundant to say an additional requirement was added. Oh, because it wasn't added yet, we are adding it. So shouldn't it say either an additional requirement was needed? Or an additional requirement needs to be added in section seven point three point three point four.
Um no, town council has it wrong.
Yeah, that was my point.
It's not added, it is missing. Upon review by the state NFIP coordinator, an additional requirement.
I understood his point of not wanting to use the word missing, but his change to the word added was incorrect, and it has to be. Something different, it could either be.
Was not, was not included.
Was excluded.
Well, an additional requirement needs to be added. Or an additional requirement was needed.
Well, it'd be an additional requirement. From. Or or within.
Yeah, yeah.
Within the federal regulation.
An additional requirement of the federal reg- regulation. Uh needs to be added, yeah. So just wordsmithing.
Housekeeping.
No.
Going with our theme. Would you like to?
I'm sure, um you want me to bring up the one you just sent?
Sure, you can, okay. So in the conversation with. Town moderator and town council, um I had originally drafted this article to try to save the town printing costs. Um so I made the format as succinct as possible so that the. Article would not be twenty pages long, but advice from uh the town moderator and town council is. It should be converted to the standard way we have of expressing silent bylaw changes, which is, you know, changes in bold or strikeout. Um um and I will do that, but I did not have time since yesterday to recraft. This bylaw amendment, so it is still in the very choice format you see here, which. So it will be harder for you to read because of that. That's my preference, but you wanted to say something on this one.
Um y- no, it 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 might be, well, it's entirely up to you, but Heather and I. We have a, we have a temporary admin um admin assistant in the office, she started yesterday. Yeah, she said she's coming back tomorrow.
You didn't scare her off?
No, no, so she's gonna be with us for six months, um.
She could do that?
She she could do this.
Can I cry?
No.
With happiness?
No, I, cuz.
Wow.
Yeah, so, uh so we, I will have her put this um in the, in the the proper format. With bold italics and strikeout.
Oh, my god, that would be so wonderful, I I would be tears of happiness, whether you want me to or not, okay, so, um. The goal of this housekeeping article um is there are numerous problems in the zoning bylaw that have crept in over the years. And they run the gamut from a a missing or extra comma. To um phrasing things and things in different ways and different sections with the same general intent, so it's very confusing. To a language that nobody can figure out what the world was intended to mean. The goal for this year is just to do the simple, obvious stuff, to get it out of the way, we have enough stuff. With MBTA going on this ye- year that we don't wanna get into any of the complicated things. So I had, uh you'll see some strikeouts here where I decided some things were just a little bit uh too difficult for this year after all. Um and didn't really count as straight housekeeping. Now, I don't know if anyone has had the opportunity of their desire to go over this. Linda and I both went over it and until we agreed with each other's opinions on what are simple edits. Just to get our grammar correct, um and our spelling correct. Uh I can go over all of these individually, or I can ask, does anyone wanna object to something? What would people prefer?
I don't think we need, uh no, we do not need to go through these individually.
Yeah, okay, and, oh.
Although I can tell you number thirty five.
Yes.
Uh will be taken out.
Oh.
And put in the floodplain warrant article.
Okay, and also if there was anything, I don't think there was anything in site plan review.
We're not doing that one.
That's right, no, if there was something there, then it had, would have to be get transferred here, but I don't think there was. Okay, so, um, oh, and number fifty one, I think it is, uh.
There's an insurance there.
Number fifty one should get struck because that had to do with parking, and we're not changing anything in parking this year, nope. It wasn't really um a mere housekeeping change anyhow. Okay, so, good, we can change board of selection to select board and um other exciting changes.
But I, but I think you were gonna work on a table.
No, this is a thing that Elizabeth just said.
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, the town moderator. Felt it would be better to have this in the standard. Format.
Yeah.
Of strikeout in bold.
And this is what the temporary staffer will.
Yeah.
So beautifully do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And do you think we'll convince the people at town meeting that these are nothing to pay attention to?
Okay, so I have two goals for this, one is to buttonhole um a couple of former members of the planning board and see if they will. Also serve as outside reviewers of the work. Um so that they, for example, will be prepared maybe even to stand up at town meeting and say, yeah, I reviewed this and it's fine, or at the hearing. And second of all, what I'm really hoping is that we'll get onto the consent calendar, but, you know, anything could be taken off the consent calendar if people don't. Most people, I imagine, would die of boredom about whether it should be a semicolon or comma, but. Uh but but I, I hope those people will come out to the hearing though and pillory them then. I would be happy to hold office hours for people to come and and ask me about the grammar, but. Of course, many people shall sit down meeting and only then discover.
Thank you.
All right. And uh now on to two family dwelling units with Andrew.
Does Andrew think you're asking him a question?
No, no, he's waiting for me to share my screen.
And I was trying to figure out how to unmute. I know I can hold the space while I'm just talking briefly, but.
So again, um town council's comments, we're just wordsmithing the opening paragraph, which. Um he did apologize. Uh this is the way the opening paragraph used to be like four years ago, and so he apologized. Um for having it go back. And I said, that's fine, I don't, I don't, okay. Um the substantive comments, and Andrew and I did not have a chance to talk about this, was um. The, all of the background information, um he felt uh would be more appropriate as part of the handout. Uh that the board prepares for each of the warrant articles. Um and that the ex- explanation to really just focus on. You know, the warrant article and the reasons for the, um you know, just what the warrant article is trying to do. Which um. Really wasn't there, and that's this last sentence. The planning board believes that expanding this bylaw provision to allow two family in residence B zoning districts.
I have a suggestion.
Oh, good. I have one too, but I.
Oh, okay, I don't know. Uh well, first of all, I would like to point out that in the first paragraph, article XX. Um we are missing three layers, it should be coverage of the second paragraph.
Oh, yes, that was a typo.
Yes, of course it was, but I'm just pointing it out, cuz I can't help myself, and second of all, I actually.
That was my first note too, by the way.
And second of all, I find myself in partial disagreement with town council. There was way too much in the explanation, but I think he recommended deleting a little bit too much. And my suggestion, which. The board may or may not agree with is to restore the sentence. In accordance with the twenty eighteen envisioned concrete comprehensive long range plan housing goal number five. In twenty twenty one, town meeting adopted zone to allow two family dwellings by special permit in the residency zoning district, which I think would serve as a very helpful. Introduction, and then go on since the adoption of the provision for two family dwellings and residency. Um et cetera, et cetera, uh. Um this may change, two of the properties had, um. And I would have, I would finish that paragraph, a total of two new dwelling units have been created under this bylaw for clarity. Um I was then gonna suggest we take the sentence about over the past year, it has been noticed in public discussions. About MBTA communities, and I think that's just moving it, um earlier. So I thought that he deleted so much, it was, um it just jumped into things. Why are we telling people about what happened in res- that residency wasn't so bad without even having said what happened in residency? Is my main point. And of course, I emailed this to you, Elizabeth, but you haven't seen it yet. I also had a couple more very slight wordsmithing. Suggestions. Oh, and the the sentence that I was gonna give an end, an ending to, the planning board believes. That expanding this bylaw provision to allow two family dwellings in the residence B zoning district. Would be a judicious step in continuing to address the town's housing goals. Which would also not make any sense if we had not had that first bit about what the town's housing goals are. So that's my suggestion.
You know, always make that part of the presentation as well, as opposed to part of the law article.
Yes, um. And I certainly agree with town council that we should get rid of the laundry list of all of the things in the comprehensive. Long range plan that don't belong in the explanation, but we've had several other articles. In past years that said, the, where the explanation said, the long range plan says we should do X, and so this article is designed to do X. So I thought it would, I don't know how. You may feel it's too much, but, um.
Andrew, you're.
Yeah, I I. I I would err on the side of having less in the actual article, I I think it gives us more flexibility to, um. If there, there is any, you know, public comment, we can address it. More easily within handout or the presentation. Um as opposed to the thing that then becomes static for the next couple of months, but um. I mean, I think as long as we hit on, you know, housing diversity. Um then really, that's, that's the main thrust of what we're trying to accomplish with this, so.
So this, this might be, this is my suggestion, but people might disagree with it. Um I would make an edit to, over the past year, it has been noted in public discussions connected with the MBT communities act that continues to be brought support, blah, 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 blah. I'd remove MBT's community act from that. I would just say, over the past year, it's been noted in public discussions held by the planning board that there continues to be broad support for more housing options within town. I think linking it to that, if people are opposed to that, then they're gonna be opposed to this without necessarily. Understanding, you know, I just. That link, that link for some people is going to be problematic regardless of the content of what's wanted to do, so that would be my suggestions to just.
And it also goes along with what Andrew said about make it less detailed. And it also goes along with what Andrew said about make it less detailed in the explanation because it gives us more flexibility.
I had problems with the um, description of the bar and. I think I understand what we're trying to say, that that's, that's something that, um.
It could go in the presentation.
Um, it could, it could, um. But, but it, I mean. It's a whole, it's a whole other concept you're introducing in one little.
And it seemed a little bit.
Which is.
Thrown in there.
And a lot of, so that, the, what's it, baby, throw out the baby with the bat one. Oh, um, there is, there is still a, a lot of conversation about the, you know, the maximum floor area ratio and. Residents double A and A doesn't make any difference, and so, um.
Well, the reason to include it was I think a lot of people don't understand. Or don't know whether it applies to each unit or to each structure. And they might think if you allow a two-family house, it's going to be twice as big. As a one-family house, and the FAR does, in fact, doesn't allow that. But maybe it doesn't belong in the explanation.
Yeah, I think that's better in the presentation, just as, as, as an aside, because, um. We're gonna know if people get confused based on public comments and things like that, so it would probably be a more helpful place.
And ever, um, you, you sent me your, I believe you already sent me your edits, right?
I did, I did. But we haven't heard Linda's.
Oh, no, I don't.
No, I think it's mine. Oh, mine was fine?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so you have that.
Yep.
What I read out loud.
So, um, just procedure wise, all of these, um, as they're edited. Will be on your agenda for the next meeting, um, and hopefully you can finalize things, um. Which if they, if they do get finalized at the next meeting, um, would I would probably resend them to town council?
Yeah.
So that. They're all set by the time you, you know, submit them for the wire.
And then the next step will be, um, thinking about the presentation at, at the hearing. And being creative and having some dialogue, um, about. What, what questions might come up and how to address them.
Um, so what will happen after, um, after, after that is, um, we have the standard format for presentations. Um, I will do an initial, um, first pass or maybe have. Heather, her name's Kim, um, you know, take a first pass where it's just the. Article number and the name and, um, and then. I'm trying to, in, you know, we'll in, include the, the language and the explanation, and then that gets sent off to. Each of the board members and you can start. You know, inputting stuff or asking, we're trying to. I, I thought it was very helpful the last, last year, um, where you different graphics or, or pictures were included or. Um, so that is definitely when you think about it. If that's something you think fits or something you want, just to let us know. Not for yours, Rob, which is too easy.
If housekeeping gets onto the consent cow, I really luck out, but we'll just have to see.
And, and all of these, we, um, I do see there's a, a question there, but all of these we will present on Saturday at the town. Meeting preparation. Right?
Town meeting preview.
Preview, preview.
What do you mean? Well, they say we, are we all?
No, Elizabeth.
Okay.
I mean, you're of course welcome to come if you don't have anything better to do on Saturday morning, but, um. It, we've all, we've all kind of, um, agreed on. On the format, so we'll be presenting those, um, and that's really to help the town moderator, um, organize, um. You know, whether the strategy should be to have all of these go first and then get to MBTA or. MBTA and, yeah, so she'll make those decisions. And give you each.
And how much time do we like to each one, like, she tried to give you that?
Uh, well, that, that.
That happens down.
That happens later.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a preview meeting and it really isn't, um, you know, this is just. Linda saying, these are the, you know, four articles we're bringing, and if, if somebody, you know, just has. Oh, what does that mean, or, um, there's, there's no, you know, like real presentation, it's just, um. Kind of a heads up, this is what's coming, you know, this is what we're planning on. Um, and so it kind of, um, allows, you know, at least, you know, the select board and the town moderator. To kind of start thinking, it's like, okay, you know, this is coming, this is coming. Um, oh, that's a citizen's petition I didn't know about. Um, so that's, that's kind of, just, it, it really is just the, you know, the heads up, this is, you know, this is what we're working on.
It can be very helpful when citizens point out giant holes in people's articles, and they sometimes do. But our articles are so perfect, that won't happen.
Well, that's not this Saturday.
Well, every so often someone mentions, well, that would just be completely illegal, you can't do that. Or perhaps you should rope in some, uh, other committees you haven't even bothered to talk to, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that, I think that's primarily what happens with citizens petitions. Um, you know, not, not so much.
Well, this is true, it does more happen for citizens petition articles.
So, um, I don't know if Mike has a question, um, on, um, to this last article.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is my iPad, so it doesn't have my last name on it, like my computer, uh, Mike Lanning from one oh two Sudbury Road. And it's about this, this article here, let me lower my hand, hold on, um. So with, with this then allow, uh. For example, houses, existing houses. Yeah, the two-family dwellings, would this allow existing houses? Then to be converted to two families or only new, new buildings would be allowed to be two families? It would allow both.
By a special permit.
Right.
Right, by a special permit, because, you know, we're at one oh two Sudbury and we're gonna be right across from the new zoned area, and it. It seems like, especially, e- even regardless of. Whether you're in zone B or zone C or whatever residential, it seems like the, it would make sense that. The houses near these develop, the areas to be developed would be allowed to be two-family regardless of where they are, because you'd wanna. It, it makes sense to have a density sort of transition, why do you have? A single-family house that has to remain very large right next to a house that then, or a complex that could be five units, it's. It seems like you're trying to allow for some of that transition, so is, is that the idea here?
Yes.
Great, okay, just wondering, thank you. I have some other question about the other one, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that.
Okay.
Cuz we're not there yet, I know.
No, no, I mean, they're not, they're not linked, um, at all.
Right.
Because, because you can see we've already done this in, you know, in, in the C zoning district. Uh, a couple of years before the MBTA was being considered, so it's.
Right, right.
More of, you know, more of a process to allow, um, greater density, more housing, and.
Right, my, and my thought was, i- if for some reason people object to be. At the very least, it should be that, the houses that, but the new areas should be allowed to do that, cuz you'd want the. It seems to make sense for transition, is all I was getting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, um, now on to MBTA communities, so I did my best for laugh. So. Would you like to move forward with that?
But you're saying you want to knock out the parking requirements?
Well, I think there are a couple of. Things that, I think, parking requirements we should talk about, I think that, um, inclusionary zoning we should talk about, I, and I also think. The definitions, yeah, um, and maybe anything else?
I have a bunch of things.
Good, okay.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna recommend that, um, most of the bunch of your things. Are, are, if they're minor edits.
Oh, I'm not gonna bring them up.
Oh, okay.
But there's.
We'll make those changes for the next round.
Sure.
Um, but what I, um. Oh, you don't see that, well, that's pretty cool, sorry. Is. So, a- a- again, you know. Town council's comments in the beginning, I, you know, they're, you know, I don't, I don't think they're substantive. Um. My first, um, the conversation that we, um, Linda Sue and I had with town council and, um, have to do with the definitions. Um, so. I utilize the, just, you know, took a lot of from the, the state's, you know, sample by law. Um, and then as. As I, you know, churn things and think about things, and then the conversation we had with town council. All of these definitions don't need to be in here. Um, there is a definition section in the zoning bylaw, and if. Adding this section, similar to any other zoning bylaw amendment, if a new definition needs to be incorporated. That's where it should be incorporated, um, but we already have a definition of affordable housing. Um, we don't need to define what an applicant is. Um, you know, area median income, you know, there's, you know, there's already, you know. Standard under zoning, um, and under chapter forty-eight, what area median income? Um, I don't feel it's, you know, necessary to define as a right. Um, you already have a definition of, you know, building coverage. Um, many of these acronyms, you know, within the bylaw, you can just the first time use the words. Put the acronym, you know, after it and then utilize it. The one aspect that town council pointed out has to do with, um, multi-family housing. Currently, the definition, there is a de- already a definition of multi-family housing. And so with the MBTA communities, um, that definition would have to be amended. Um. And so. Currently, the definition. Multi, multi-family dwelling, a structure containing more than two dwelling units. This term shall include but is not limited to triplex, quadplex. And townhouse structures containing three or more dwelling units. Um, so because, um, the MBTA communities, the, the guidelines say. That, um, you can, a multi-family, um. Project under MBTA communities is. Three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit. So, that's a little bit different than what the current definition says, and current definitions says. You know, it's, you know, more than two, so more than two dwellings, you have to have a triplex. For it to be considered multi-family.
But ours is also based, ours is also about structures rather than housing, theirs is about. The lot, whereas ours is about the structure. Well, theirs is about the building or the lot, and ours is stri- strictly about the structure, a single structure.
So. My recommendation is to just pull this definition and, and amend. Section one three seventeen, say, you know, under section seven point eleven. A multi-family dwelling and then incorporate this definition. But, you know, all, you know, all these other definitions. We already have through this, you know, section seven, eight, we already know who the, you know, authority under site plan review is. Um, and if somebody wants to, under MBTA communities, request a parking waiver. Then it's a special permit and site plan, the site plan review authority is the board of appeals. So that definition shouldn't even be, you know, shouldn't be here. Anyways, we already have it defined, so, um. Town council did say, you know, they're gonna kind of, you know, think a little bit more about the definitions, um, and if there is a definition, then. Also needs to be amended or incorporated, um, they'll kind of think about that, but, um. I think it helps streamline. This bylaw and makes it less, you know, somebody's not going, well, you know, but there is a definition section, what is? You know, why is, you know, is this different and?
So the only one that it would be amended is that seven point one, one point three, point one one, right, the multi-family. The rest are all in accordance with our current zoning bylaw.
I, I believe so, town council and I are gonna go back.
And give people this a handout, I mean, I think when we talk about.
When we do the handout.
I think this would be really helpful, that people, give people some indication what we're talking about.
As far as definitions?
Yeah, yeah, just to hand out with the definition.
Yeah.
We don't need to make it very terminal, but.
Well, we never even mentioned transit, so it's not like, yeah, we need to say that, but.
So that would be, you know, I, I think what you're gonna see is, you know, all of these definitions get deleted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, up here. The first item is gonna be, um, amend section one point three point seventeen, multi-unit dwelling.
Yeah.
Um, and so that will be number one, and then, yeah, from there, number two. So that was my. And then as far as, um. You wanna, oh, do you wanna talk about parking? It, um, it does not appear to, um. Change the compliance model.
But we can't do it, because you're not allowed to say that multi-family projects have different requirements from the underlying zone. That's part of the MBTA communities act, I thought, that you can't apply stricter requirements than the underlying zoning.
These aren't stricter, I'm.
You're right, they're less strict, they're looser, you're right, they're looser, so we could. But you're right that if we're going to take up parking in twenty twenty-five. We could do it all together.
So you're saying just eliminate it, and then if people want, they can apply for a special permit or.
If they, yeah, if they, if they wanna.
If they wanna reduce.
The parking requirement.
So just eliminate it entirely.
Yeah, the, the.
The whole section, yeah.
Um, yeah, it'll, it'll, well.
It'll just revert back to the existing zoning. For parking.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it needs to be specifically stated in here, but, I mean, I'll ask town council, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it would just revert. And, and the same thing with any, any other requirement in the zoning bylaw, you know, the floodplain and, um, you know. If you're in a floodplain and you wanna, you know, you, you still have to abide by, you know, seven point eight and.
Yeah. And what's the thought, we obviously had an idea of loosening requirements, what's the idea of, I'm going back to?
So, there, you know, there's, it, I mean, it was just brought up a couple of times during, you know, the conversation, and especially when you think about transit orient. Tated development, your train stations and.
You want less.
Less pretty service.
Right, so then why would we?
But, well, because not all of the overlay districts.
Are contiguous.
Contiguous to the train station.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think there needs to be more education.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on parking and the, the reality of having. Um, having adequate parking, um, does not, you know, does not mean. That it has to be more, um, and I, I think it depends on, you know, where a project is and.
That it has to be more, um and I I think it depends on, you know, where a project is and. Um. And from a compliance model standpoint, the the change does not drastically, you know, doesn't. It doesn't make the whole thing out of compliance, um it now, this isn't a significant change.
And we wouldn't want that to get in the way of the overall passenger. Okay, I mean, you know, remember when people would look and say, oh, you're you're gonna give them easier parking regulations, that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, I guess the the flip side. Argument to that would be, okay, so you're gonna let them put up three, you know, three units and then they're gonna pave the whole thing because they gotta have. X number of parking spots.
Well, but.
But that's, that's, but I'm I'm thinking in terms of. Yeah, so that's, that's the argument that somebody's gonna say. I say, okay, well, I'm fine with that, but you're gonna pave the whole thing now. So now I'm gonna live next to a parking lot?
Well, but there still needs to, you know, there's, that's where. So I think that's where the site plan.
Yeah.
You know, the site plan rules and regs specific to MBTA communities comes in. Where it's, you know, right now the zoning bylaw has a provision for reserved parking. Um, so maybe the site plan rules and regs say, you know, you need two spaces per dwelling unit. Um, and those spaces can, you know, be, you know, of gravel, they could be impervious pavers. They could be, um, you know, they could be.
Implemented as.
Yes, or, you know, um utilize, you know, you know, the building commissioner, you know, some. Some, and and that's currently what happens if, if somebody has reserved parking and, you know, complaints start coming in, the building commissioner. You know, can have them build that parking. Um, so that I think that could be, I I think that could be a way to, you know, kind of think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if we leave it in, there's gonna be questions. If we take it out, there's gonna be questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it just comes down to what do we, what do we actually want to do?
And also, I think we've said um that we're really not. Changing the underlying zoning. I think that's sort of what we laid out for people, that it was not dramatic change from the existing zone. And I think if we do change the parking, we'll say, wait a minute. That's a change. You didn't ask us.
Yeah. What's been the response from public meetings to a parking?
We haven't asked them a lot about it.
Well, several people have volunteered that this would be a good idea.
And separately, the consultant, our, our, our consultant, our GIS consultant, when they first did the model, put in. This change in parking because that's kind of what the standard is now for multifamily.
Yeah.
And so it was like, yeah, let's put what the standard is. And then when we got the traffic study, I mean, the parking study back, I was kinda like, gee, that's what the standard is. We've, we've gotten some professional input that that's what the standard is and we should be moving in that direction. And then the question is when we put that in and some people saw it, they were like. No, it's supposed to be two, wait a minute. And we really hadn't. Realized that we have to have a parking discussion now.
Yeah.
And we just decided, we don't really wanna have a whole parking discussion with MBTA. We're gonna have a parking.
Discussion ten block. Yeah.
And I.
The guidelines are fine. I mean, I don't disagree with the guideline. I just don't think we need to.
Yeah, so it's like. Well, and and I, and I think, you know, sequentially, when you think about the conversation, if this, you know, does pass. Um, and you you begin to start having, you know, the parking conversations. Um. It 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 can even be, okay, you know, with, within, you know, the half mile, you know. Radius of, you know, the, the train station or, you know, five minute walk or. Um, the zoning bylaw can can structure parking. Um, differently for for different areas.
Yeah, for different, for different sub-districts.
Right. But also now you'd have, you'd have a situation where someone who was included in this district. Would have an advantage versus all the other residents in town as well. It's kind of like, oh, well. I was in an MBTA district, I wouldn't have to.
Mm-hmm.
They don't even have to build anything, they can say, okay, you know, I don't need to.
Why, why don't I get that? I have to put in, you know, for my regular house, so. Yeah, so that's kind of an equity too, of getting that opportunity to the MBTA community.
Yeah.
District. What's wrong with, if it's good enough for them, why is it not good enough for me?
Yeah.
So I think that also makes a bigger conversation.
Yeah, I think I'd be prepared for the question of if we're, if this is transit oriented housing. Why are we not? Kind of incentivizing, you know, fewer cars, that type of thing. So I'd be prepared, I would just, in terms of thinking through what questions we're gonna get.
Cause the parking situation is a much bigger question than just this. And we're looking at it, we're trying to figure out the best way to approach it, we've done a study on it, we need more data, we hope they will bring it to town meeting next year.
Yeah.
Right, plus as Elizabeth said. They could be a special permit or site plan review if you manage to get that done.
Yeah.
But yes, you're right, we should definitely be prepared for that question.
Yeah.
And um, so. What I did was kind of. A little cut and paste um of what Lexington last year. Um, and so one issue is, we're not gonna have the economic feasibility analysis. By the time this goes to print and maybe. You know, so.
Right, so town, town council will um help. Figure out how to develop this warrant article that. Whatever the feasibility study comes back at. Um. You know, allows for this amendment.
Well, and and what is.
Study by town meeting?
You'll have, we'll have the study by town meeting, so.
We can write the language to say.
And then I think it's just the motion.
Thing and change them.
Yeah. So I, I, I think you put it in at twenty percent. Um, and then the economic feasibility analysis will be done before town meeting, um and then you would, you know, you know. Have your motion would be to amend that percentage.
Okay.
Um, the, the one conversation that the board hasn't had um is. What is the trigger? Just number of units.
Number of units.
Cause we are, we are already know that under like the mixed use, develop the combined business residence. Um, that, you know. Affordable requirement for, you know, four or more, um it does not get used. Um, and and we have heard over and over and over again and and. Um, you know, there's. Data and, and it's, and it's not anecdotal, I mean, you have thirteen B com app. Um, you know, that had eight units, uh and it's, you know. You know, too affordable and it, you know, the twenty percent was, you know, just makes the project, you know, not feasible in today's market. So, um. Thus, the board hasn't had the question, what is gonna be the trigger?
What are other, now you said this was from Lexington.
Right.
What are other towns doing? I mean, you know, this, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, okay?
Um, we know.
Well, yeah, a lot of them are eight, eight or ten.
Well, when you say what is the trigger? Do you mean? Units or do you mean the percentage of affordable?
No, no, the number of units.
Because we could do, we could try to do something similar to what we were going to do, which is to say. If it's more than five units, it has to be ten percent and if it's more than twenty units, then it has to be. But ten, uh twenty percent or more than ten units, it has to be twenty percent. We ran into some trouble with that, we'd have to think carefully, but we have our. Um, experience from last year to help us do that. Better. I hope.
Do we have a sense of what percentage? This might be a really complicated question. If we're looking at eight or more dwelling units. What percentage of the districts that we're proposing, could you actually build eight or more units? You said a question like, if it's like, it's gotta be eight or more units, but there's only, you know.
In in all of the districts, you, there's at least. Um, you know, the Sudbury Road District would be the, this, this is the smallest.
Yeah.
One, and yeah, where, you know, where the Row Gardens is. Um, you know, yeah, you could, you could build, you know, right now, there's, I think there's thirty four units. Um, and based on the acreage, um you could do thirty six.
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to think of like the number of different parcels that would support eight or more units, like are we, is that enough? Is is it enough to say like eight units is fine because the, look at the number of places you could put eight units? Um, or is it, yeah, eight units is a lot and we're not gonna see a lot of eight unit dwellings. So we wanna lower it, change the.
You can always buy more than one parcel and put them to work too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the feasibility of like, you know, we've kind of. I think, I think the way a lot of people in town are thinking about this is like, well, you know, it's, it's. It's not objectionable to me because they're talking about, you know, kind of three units here and two units there and that it's not bigger developments, but. If we're also talking about affordable housing being, you know, a driver for this and that we wanna have as much affordable housing as possible, it's like how.
Well, but we've also chosen several districts to be. In places where they do have large parcels already and they're not anywhere near where there's single family housing. So at least in those parcels.
Yeah.
It would be easy to put in eight units.
Yeah.
Or more.
Well, and and so you can, so, um, it kind, it it also comes down to how. How complicated a warrant article are we talking about? Because the economic feasibility analysis can test. Whatever model you want to put in, so it could be for projects of six, you know. Yeah, um. Projects of six units. You know, six or seven units, you know, one unit of affordable, um you know, projects of eight or more, you know, twenty percent. So I mean, you can, you can, you can draft it however you, you know, you wanna draft it and. And the consultant will run the feasibility analysis and come back and say, okay, well, based on, you know, all of the parameters that go into this. A six unit project, one affordable, it's not economic, um. And so I, so you could say, you know, eight or more dwelling units, at least twenty percent. Um, and or, you know, eight or more at. Um, ten percent and, you know, twenty or more, twenty percent. So I, I mean, eight or more at ten percent and twenty or more at, you know, twenty percent. Um, and 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 the economic feasibility analysis, that might work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, so. I, 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 I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, that's the hard thing. I mean, I mean, I think my, my gut instinct is just like, you know. Minimum units, maximum affordability, you know, in in terms of like, what do we want? We want as much affordable housing as we can get. That's, that makes, that fall, that qualifies under the economic feasibility model. You know, we wanna encourage as much affordable development as possible. Is the way, is is my instinct for this, is like, the way we're selling this to the town is that this is gonna diversify housing stock, it's gonna increase affordability. You know, the.
Well, we also have to sell it to the state, which is the whatever affordability um component we need put in. Is going to develop.
And so that's, that's the real question. It's like, just, I guess it's just a question of what does the analysis tell us we can do? So it's less what we wanna do and what does the feasibility tell us we can do?
So I, 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 I think that's, you know, somewhat why um. You know, Lexington wrote theirs in this, in this manner.
Yeah.
Um. Because. The economic feasibility analysis may inform, you know, town meeting and the warrant article. But it still has to go to the state and the state still has to approve this. So I think how Lexington wrote this was to allow the bylaw. To get approved at town meeting and, you know, the, you know, the attorney general, you know. No reason why the attorney general wouldn't approve this, but if the state came back and said, yeah, no, that's, you know, we disagree with the economic feasibility analysis or. It didn't take this into consideration, redo it, and then they find out that, oh, yeah, that, that percentage really isn't, you know, feasible. Then they don't have to go back to town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is actually pretty well crafted in that sense. I mean, I do notice that they're twiddling both knobs at the same. Time, the percentage of affordability and the number of units, but it's a nice compromise that they only have three positions. Uh, the most possible affordability, the median position and the.
Well, they already know that they can't need twenty percent. So they, I put that in. That was why, you know, cause we don't know that we can't eat twenty percent, but they put in, they had their economic. Done and it showed that they were borderline on fifteen percent, so that's why they put in fifteen percent, hoping the state would approve.
But they'll see.
And I mean, the state said, no, that feasibility is too marginal, then they're willing to go back to ten, so that's.
Right, but we could put this in and then we could strike out the first sentence or the two sentences, depending on what our economic feasibility. Comes back as.
Why are we putting this in there at all? I'm, I know, it sounds like a basic question, but. I think I'm, I'm tired, um so. I'm having a hard time understanding. And what I'm concerned about is that when you go into town meeting for the MBT communities act, that we're complicating it. And when people get complicated, when, when you complicate people, they get afraid and then turn against it. That's the. Maybe, why are we doing?
Have a lot of support from the housing groups.
But what is it? I mean, what's it doing?
It's allowing affordable housing.
Require, requiring affordable housing.
Point when we did this was, this was about housing and not about affordable housing, remember?
So we don't wanna drop down on our forty B percentage, we could simply say. You always have to provide.
On our forty B percentage with, with the two proposals we've got.
No, eventually we will, because there will always be new unaffordable units.
I'm just like, oh my god, this is getting.
So there's.
I'll think about it later, but it's getting so complicated to me. And I kinda know what this is about, not as, not as well as you all do, that I'm worried of overwhelming. The people in town, that's all. So that's just something I guess I have to work out myself.
You need to keep it simple, okay?
We, we really need to keep it simple and by.
This is a whole component of this project.
Is it? I mean, the simplicity of it is, we need more housing and we need more affordable housing. And zoning is a tool that allows us to do that while still shaping what that housing looks like in our community. But this is a tool we can use to do that.
To Mary's point, though, the, the purpose of the MBTA communities was not for affordable housing.
It was never for affordable housing.
It was. To create more housing.
And now.
The Commonwealth needs more housing across the board and, you know, near transit centers has a lot of benefits. From sustainability and walkability and all of that. It was never about affordable housing.
But they allow for affordable housing.
Under, under the guidelines, and and that's why you have, you know, in limited circumstances.
And which is why I think, but that I think is a way, I think that's one of the reasons that people have signed onto it.
Right.
Is because you can make the trade off and say, you know, I'm not thrilled about the idea of there being three units here and four units there and five units there and eight units there, but. You know what? If, if one of those is more affordable and, and, you know, grandma moves down the street and, you know, my kid's kindergarten. and, you know, grandma moves down the street and, you know, my kid's kindergarten teacher moves to her, it's the affordability piece of it may not be a central component to it, but whenever we talk about zoning and allowing for more diversity of housing, the affordability piece comes into it. And I think from I guess from a practical and moral perspective, I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, we're developing um Baker Avenue.
Right.
And you had a forty B with twenty five percent affordable housing.
Right.
Or, oh, my goodness, an MBTA communities where I can put up those buildings or I put up some tall buildings with no affordable housing? Oh gee, why, why would I wanna do that forty B?
I think it's always a balancing act of not making the requirements too onerous, but I don't think there's any reason to not take a bite of that apple.
Yeah.
When when.
What level of affordability are you talking here, twenty?
Well, that's the maximum you could have is twenty percent at eighty percent. You know. So it's not a deep discount and you're not doing sixty percent or um, or thirty percent and you're not um going up to, you know, so it's if eighty percent, which is like the forty B. But um, you can, uh.
But only if an economic feasibility analysis.
To build the project.
I know for some people in town, especially the business community. Um, the fact that we're bringing in more housing is attractive to them because they're thinking more customers. Uh, more people that are gonna come in town and they're gonna spend more money on local businesses so that those just will thrive and so that's the appeal to them. Um, and.
Eighty people who make eighty percent of median income in Middlesex County. It can buy. I mean, they, you know.
Window what type of worries?
What is eighty percent? Um, yeah, I'd I'd have to stop sharing. For a family of four, yeah.
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
It's like eighty eight, it's, you know, roughly eighty thousand for a single person household.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not.
Although. I'd be absolutely shocked if an economic feasibility analysis allows for twenty percent affordable.
Well, if we wanna make the warrant article less frightening, we could leave it out to if we're that sure that it won't lie. It's but it's a balancing act again, the housing, people who are in favor of affordable housing, and there are a lot of such people in town, really would like to see twenty percent in, but people, but but other people would equally like to see twenty percent out.
I mean, what, by the time we get to town meeting, we will know what that answer is.
Yes, it's.
Yes, the AMI is close to like ninety thousand dollars.
Control.
Yeah.
Sorry, we can't control that number.
Yeah.
It will come back. You know, with some analysis that says this project can be built with such and such um a percent affordable. So whatever number we're putting in here, we we just, you know, if we put ten percent, that's all we'll get. Fifteen percent, we might get it or not. Maybe we should put in you know, twelve and a half percent and fifteen percent, assuming that we'll never get twenty percent.
And in your public hearings, you have positive comments about or or building a new part.
I I think we have very strong support in the housing community, but I I.
What about, yeah, but the overall people in.
I I I think the overall people, overall people are thinking that um. These are, you know, I you get more comments about oh, you know, they're just gonna turn those into condos, expensive condos, you know, or those are gonna be luxury units. Is more what people are saying. And as opposed to I'm worried that there um a a few affordable units in there.
I think people have been more surprised that um, it wasn't intended as an affordability measure. That like that wasn't the primary purpose of it. I think most people, when they first hear about it, are like, oh, more affordable housing and like near transit.
Right.
So I think more people are surprised that's not a driver behind it.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard any strong objections to the affordability of it.
I wouldn't if the state didn't include it for fear that they wouldn't pass the law.
Yeah.
Which is the same thing.
That ten percent so that that people in the town are certainly not having to subsidize this by building more affordable housing somewhere else. All on the town's nickel, right? So at the ten percent leveling number is like, okay, we have to meet our townwide goals, which is ten percent, so. It and it's just, if that's equity, but if you say, oh, we're not gonna put in any affordable housing here. Then you the town is gonna have to find money somehow to you know, or wait for the next forty B to get ourselves up to ten percent because we've allowed all this multifamily housing to be built, you know. Or zone or a thousand units that might come with no affordability component to them.
What I um probably um will suggest is um. If the the board wishes to in include the language in this way, I'll send it off tomorrow to town council. Just immediately get um, you know, his input on those, cuz they are working with, you know, a number of communities and everybody's kind of ooching, booting towards that same finish line um right now.
I chose Lexington cuz they're also council.
Why don't we just make it ten percent? That's our scheme again.
Why not?
I mean, if we're gonna send this to town council for review, why don't we just go sweep the fences anyways? And hit the twenty percent and then see if it wasn't passed muster.
We're already requiring twenty percent in combined business residents to our, you know.
We already, we already know that that for four units.
We don't.
Or that it it doesn't work, so.
But it could work for twenty units and we could get a multifamily of twenty units it in a on a large parcel. I'm just saying, we don't only require ten percent, but that is what we typically require.
So the good thing is we'll have the economic feasibility analysis before town meeting. So I I think the language um that Linda has provided allows for the greatest
Yep.
Flexibility um that can be, you know, amended um as part of the motion. Um, but I but I also wanna get is just town councils thought about wording it this way about the, you know. HLC providing and writing and, you know, okay, is it worded this way? So you don't have, if if something gets passed by the town meeting and the AG, but HLC doesn't like it, now does this allow us not to have to go back to town meeting? So that, I think is um, the the concern cuz. Yeah, and then um you know, in here, just, you know, a fractional unit gets rounded down.
Right.
And so even if it's one point six, it's just one.
That's madam chair.
Yes, Keith has been very patient. Can we?
Well, but well, we can, but are we going to the whole of this section? First.
Yes.
Two through four, do we even need those? Aren't they covered elsewhere in the zoning bylaw already?
Um, I'm not sure, um, no, not really, but I I think they're part of the guidelines.
Yeah.
Um, and so I I'll check with town. I don't think they're they're, they may not be necessary because elsewhere in the bylaws says, you know, a project, you know, it has to be consistent with the the guidelines and
Okay.
Guidelines say, you know, you can't.
Why is it a three floors versus thirty five feet in height?
Um, so the compliance, the compliance model is um that the height limitation is still thirty five feet.
Oh, okay.
Um.
I'm just curious cuz I.
But so for the compliance model, when they do the density, they have to do it by the floors.
Okay.
So that's why it says three floors.
So with the thirty five.
The thirty five is it's still the height.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have other things generally, but should I add all those until we're done talking about inclusionary?
Uh, are we done with inclusionary?
Madam Chair.
Are you going to address inclusionary?
Yes.
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 Please go ahead.
Yeah, tha- thanks very much. First, the um. It it's certainly the case that when section three A passed as a law, it was about housing. By the time uh the uh the DHCD, as was called then, issued its guidelines, it was about housing and affordable housing. Uh, and so that's been out there for quite a while now. Um, ten percent uh can be the uh percentage uh of an inclu- of an inclusionary uh zoning bylaw in MBTA communities. Uh, with with, yeah, if the community wishes, ten per- ten percent is is allowable. It's over ten percent and up to twenty uh percent that requires an economic feasibility analysis, which the town is undertaking. The town got grant money. I don't know what the status of that uh re- report is, uh, but that the the town is is pursuing um, taining the information that would allow us to know whether more than ten percent would be justified. Um, just some and and whether uh and even if the town nominally meets its goal of ten percent. Uh, I just wanna say our current, we're currently we're just three units below. But only um, so we're at nine point nine seven percent. The way that the subsidized housing inventory counts, however, only four point nine eight percent of those units are deed restricted at eighty percent of AMI, the rest are market rate. So um, and as these two forty Bs, if tho- those both go forward, it will only bring us up to even with adding four hundred and sixty two more units. Uh. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Brett, uh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, six point four four percent, it would take us up to six point four four percent that uh of our uh uh year round housing units that are eighty percent of AMI. So there's a lot of work still to be done to get affordable units that are uh not uh market rate units in a rental that can count. Uh, there's still a lot to do and we're spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. Uh, per affordable unit if we have to, if we have to pay for them ourselves. So I think it's it's very important that uh if we can get affordable units produced by the market, produced by the developer, that that we ought to do that and and I um, really like the approach that Lexington uh uh did for inclusionary and I hope we can follow that as the chair suggests. Thanks.
Thanks, okay. So, um. For about an hour over big time, but um, we thought this would be a.
We need a meeting.
Okay, um, I will follow up with town council on the inclusion.
Um, Linda also had the comment about um requiring playground and rec- recreation area. Um. Which I I think that's great. Um. I don't think I have a dog. I think I think forty uh forty units is a lot.
Well, wait a second, doesn't that run into trouble with um stricter against requiring more of multifamily than the underlying zone? Lying zone.
We don't. We don't have any multifamily by right.
But do we require for any?
So I think.
For for any building requiring forty or more units, generally in town, do we require?
I think you will, I think it's more appropriate to put this in the site plan bowls and right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Appropriate play areas should be provided and have it be more general.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah. Um, I know it's almost nine thirty, um, you will get to minutes.
Yes.
You're not leaving until you do the minutes.
So.
So.
I have some, a bunch of comments and some of them are substantive, but I wonder. Elizabeth, should you take a whack at them and bring back a different version?
This is not.
Okay.
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 Do that.
Okay. And and you could circulate that
Yep.
To everyone.
Meeting, okay, that will certainly save a lot of fun right now.
Okay.
All right.
Um, any other comments on MBTA this evening? Thank you so much. Okay, onward now. Oh, you have Mike. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mike, I'm sorry, you've been so patient. Thank you.
That's no problem. There, my back on the screen, there we are. Okay. Wait, I had a couple of uh comments because I I.
Mike, you need to state your name and your address.
Oh, yes, I I'm sorry. Michael Landon from one oh two Sudbury Road. Um, I had a couple of comments, um. I know one of you were talking about uh perception of this thing a lot, a little bit, and I think to do with touching the parking at this time would be a mistake because I know that during the last round of this, the flyers I was getting in the mail and things were very much related to you're never gonna have a place to park in front of your house if if they relax the parking issues like this and cuz they're they're gonna still have as many cars and then they're always gonna be out on the street. And whether that's true or not, that's the perception. So I just wanted to pass that along. So I think I think the idea of addressing it as a separate parking issue for the whole town is is a much, is a much better idea. Uh, relative to the inclusionary thing. Um, if there was any way that you could write that section that was more of a carrot versus a stick, and I I don't know how easy it is to do that. I liked numbers two, three, and four that you were talking about. But the way the first one was worded, it's it's really the bottom line is if we have more dense housing, it's all gonna become more affordable. Right? Now, there's a difference between that affordable and the affordable we're talking about, but right now we have, we don't even really have middle range affordable in some of the areas of Concord, which this will definitely work on, so. Uh, I I think you can work inclusionary into the larger developments like you're talking about. Um, and the other thing is is in from a optic standpoint, it might make sense to talk a little bit more about for eight units, one has to be this, as opposed to saying percent. Percent sounds like a lot more. We talk about eight units, then you say twenty percent, twenty percent sounds like a big number relative to saying, you know, rounded down, that's one, right? So it's something to think about, but if there was a way that you could do it where i- in this particular document for the, you know, that you're gonna look at all the ways to be in is inclusionary as possible, and just the fact that we're making denser housing, we will be including more people, there'll be more opportunities.
Elizabeth. Uh, sorry, something popped up on our screen. We're just taking care of it.
No, it's there, well, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was pretty much down there anyway. I did have one more, one more thought, and that is where I am on on Sudbury Road, um, right across the street is the old Wheeler House. And right next to me is a house that the two of them and other historians of town fight about which one's older, the one across the street is the one next to me. And it just seems like the way that the that area is defo- it cut up, that the one thing that would make sense to me would be that lot on the corner in the Wheeler House would be in this two families owned area as opposed to the five plus because it just would seem kind of weird with all these homes right around the Wheeler House right there. Cuz I don't think you're gonna be able to do much to it cuz it's, you know, from the sixteen hundreds. So I don't know if there's any way to take that one lot on the corner out. Then add a couple more somewhere else just to get the balance there. Cuz if you come from the mobile station on the mobile station, then you have the the house that we like to call the Brady Bunch House, right? Really kind of is out of place there.
Yeah.
And then the yellow house and a lot. And I think, right, that all that could be part of that. I know you've gone over this already. I get it, I get it.
No, 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 we actually.
I'm sorry, I'll stop.
No, no, we have gotten s- uh similar feedback from a number of uh in, you know, residents such as yourself. And we have changed that um uh so that there actually now are additional homes on Th- Thorough Street. And we've taken out um those three lots on um Sudbury Street, on Sudbury, yeah.
Yeah, that's great because it makes a lot of sense that.
Yeah, can you see the the map?
The existing condos and stuff could be in there and one lot's still in there that's next to the Wheeler House, but you know. One lot still in there that's next to the Wheeler House, but, you know, I'm not gonna. Yeah, but I, yeah, that that looks great. I mostly it was the first two that I was talking about.
Yes, you have to have contiguous lots, so we couldn't keep.
Uh, because they own both those, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, never mind, that makes sense. Sorry about that, okay. Thanks for doing that, cause I think that's great. I I I'm very much in favor of this. I just, I just, my my number one. Um, recommendation is I listened to a lot of this tonight and you guys really are trying to stay very high level, but then you get down to the weeds again. Then you're going high level again, then you get down the weeds. And for this document, as as high level as you can be, I think is the best way to get this thing across to people that it's not gonna destroy our town.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, and um Paris.
Good night.
Yes, thank you very much and thank you um for your indulging me. Uh, I'm just. Uh, uh, Paris Ballinger Energy North Group, one twenty nine through one forty seven Lowell Road. Um, just kind of new to um getting familiarized with the project. And so it's more of a high level understanding of when you are tracking or targeting to. Go before town for approval for this, or I I I how far down the road are you? And uh, what what are you looking at in terms of targeting that? Best guess, I guess.
Uh, well, uh, so, um, no. So first off, if you haven't gone to the town's website, um, I'd go to the town's website, right there on the homepage. There's a button that says MBTA Communities, um, and that brings you directly to um a page. That has more information than you'll probably ever want to know. Um, but this is um zoning, this is not a project, this is, um, there are no projects. Um.
Right, right, no, I mean, uh, um, in terms of selling it to the town, is this going before the town for approval? Or is it the decision been made and you're just.
No, no, this, okay, um, no, this will, um, the planning board will submit a warrant article for annual town meeting. By um January third, it will go on the warrant for annual town meeting, which is May first. April thirtieth. Or May the ground. Yeah, um, and uh so it will go before town meeting. Um, for town meeting to vote on whether to adopt this zoning bylaw or not. Um, and then once it is, is should it pass town meeting, um, it requires approval from the Attorney General. And um before it is passed. Um, and then separately requires approval from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. To be found in compliance with the state guidelines for the town to be founding compliance and eligible for certain grants.
Okay, so this is, this is probably gonna trail off in your estimation eh through the next. Through next year, end of next year, probably with all those approvals.
Um, well, so there's um, there's, if it passes town meeting and it gets submitted to the Attorney General. And it passes the Attorney General, um, it is a zoning bylaw, it is in effect. Um, and and that that's the end of that process.
Got it.
The compliance requirement with the state is is a separate process. Um, and to be not in compliance jeopardizes various grants uh programs through the state, but that's separate.
Um, okay.
Should it pass town meeting at um the end of April, um, first of May and is approved by the Attorney General. Um, it is a zoning bylaw that is in effect.
Okay, and that happens pretty quickly then after the April.
No, the Attorney General has ninety days.
Ninety days.
Committed, and the Attorney General on their own can tell the town that the town has granted a time extension. For, I think, thirty or sixty days if they need more time.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, thank you very much for taking the time to explain that to me. Appreciate you bringing me up to speed.
Uh, Mr. Carr.
Hi, hi, Steve Carr, uh, Mustafil Road. Um, a long time ago, I remember the planning board, now I remember the Concord Housing Foundation. To go back to a couple of the numbers, we've talked about a minimum number of eight, a minimum number, I think of ten, a minimum number of fifteen. Whatever that minimum number is, I wouldn't be surprised to see developments being one fewer than those numbers. And then, when in addition, when you have the rounding down, um, let's say the minimum number is fifteen. I wouldn't be surprised to see um twenty nine unit projects. That's not gonna help us getting towards the ten percent. Um, so I'd uh, I I think in the draft that was presented earlier here for Elizabeth, there was a rounding up. That at least takes care of part of the problem, um, or, you know, to me, one might say a fair thing would be halfway. You know, if it's half you round down and if it's more than half you round up, but the way it is set within what Lexington did. Those numbers are not gonna be helpful towards satisfying the ten percent, the forty B requirement.
We do a chart.
Thank you, thank you. Charting, need a chart.
Yeah.
Good thought, okay. Okay, okay, now onto schedule.
Schedule, so everybody got the um schedule, um, the only change um is December twenty twenty four. Um, Heather and I talked about it, we you, we, we have tried to only do one meeting in December um in the past four years. That has never worked, um, so we did shift the twenty twenty four schedule. Before it was a planning board on the tenth, um, we moved planning board to the third and the seventeenth. Um, and CPC to the tenth.
I noticed how cleverly there's only one conflict between them all year long. It's pretty amazing, so um.
There's no need for the board to approve the schedule, she, um, we just wanna put it out there to make sure that. You know, everybody, you know.
I don't wanna belabor the point, but on an, at another time, perhaps we should talk about. As it count calendar, um, any issues um about virtual versus hybrid. Um, also, um, timing of meetings and frequency of meetings. I don't wanna ignore those subjects. And I know some people might wanna have input, but but perhaps we can put that on the agenda for uh two weeks from then. Though I think that'll be a full agenda.
Timing of meetings.
Time, time, you know, time.
Time.
Frequency and virtual versus hybrid.
Okay.
Um, liaison updates, chairs report. This, I sent out a little chairs report to find, um, nobody got it. Nobody got it? Oops, do you wanna read it? No, that was the whole point. We never get to a chairs report or liaison reports because of this. Um, so um, I'm trying now to send out a a chairs report, sorry, um, I didn't get it out in timely fashion.
Well, I didn't see it.
Oh, so, okay.
I will send this to you.
Is is there anything else as a a planner's update that we ought to be aware of?
Um, no, my brain is full, okay.
But it has room for minutes.
And minutes, minutes. Um, have you received comments?
And um, I I received, um, I received additional edits from Sue.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Like.
I didn't know.
Are they such that we need to go?
No, I, well, I have them.
I know you have them. How extensive are?
No, they're they're simple.
Okay, let's go to one.
We can approve.
We improve the.
Edge.
Yeah, I've heard them from.
Well, we have to see the edits.
You wanna see, are they substantive or just just?
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna zoom and here you go, I'm starting with September twelfth. But it's.
Uh. Okay, I'm trying to figure out.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
Which one is which amongst all the.
I couldn't.
Multiple sets of edits and misses and.
I could not tell where your additional edits were. Is that all of these little lines?
No, no, that's for all the ones that you had already put in there. Um, these were already circulated.
This is what you just sent me today.
Yes, but it concluded all your edits plus the extra edits I had added. I should have clearly accepted edits. Uh, if it was in the mood where it would display who may be edited, you could see that I had made the ones that I made. But I don't know how to switch and review to. Uh. That, um, I see the edit in this one and in the August one. It was like one word. And the September one. Okay, well, we don't, there was a hyphen, but we don't need to care. It was, I don't think I would have just sent you a hyphen.
Yeah, but if, I mean, if they're not like.
Right.
Substantially substantive, if they're if they're edits like that, then then I'm happy to put them with your, you know, your review. That they don't substantially change the meaning of the minutes.
Right, and the other one, the the only difference that made any difference at all. Is I said, instead of taking place, we should say being implemented.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, no.
Okay. Okay, and there was an and instead of a comma.
Yeah.
So you've edited seven twenty five, eight point two, nine twelve.
Uh, nobody edited uh seven twenty five since the last time you got it.
Great.
Okay. So I think emotionally we approve the minutes for the seven forty five meeting as permitted.
Would you like to? Yeah, add to twenty two and and.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, you agreed to that.
I second.
Okay, oh, there you go.
Mister Almeida. Mister Kitty.
Yes.
Who's planning it?
Yes.
Mustachian.
Hi.
Mister Boardman.
You lost you.
Myself, Linda Miller, yes, okay, uh, that concludes our meeting for this evening.
Are we forgetting anything, Heather?
No. I'm here.
I don't think we're forgetting anything, all right.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.